You know, and then Ashlyn has a lady who was a deputy city council. I talked to her beforehand. She was up there with, you know, the girls side by side. She was answering some of the questions and he was answering. He said, no, no, this is what the judge decided. This is where you gotta go with that. But it's really complicated. You're a voice officer. You show up. Do me a place for him to go. Don't. Too entirely give me such a rule. And you know, it was, it's, it's tough. I gotta tell you, then the other thing that they did that night was there is this climate friendly inequitable. Housing, you know, the land use thing. That's, that'd be, they have the city staff had fifty three pages. It's city ordinance. They have line in, line out.
Yeah.
And everybody goes, oh, don't worry about it. Yeah, it is that. That climate friendly thing is just, I say, well, it doesn't cost anything. Think how much it costs a stack of diamonds. And then the other thing that bothers me is think how much brain power you have of this. The microphone is working. We're sitting there and not doing it. Other. Well, we just got, we're part of the state that we're under the limit. Instead of six thousand, yeah, six thousand is the trigger point in which you have to.
That's.
So you've lost some people. But, but within a half a mile of a major transportation corridor. So for, for like central point and for Phoenix, like the Phoenix, they said, well, we're, we're under the limit. Yeah, except that eighty five percent of your cities, you're gonna happen. So whatever. The biggest instructions they had about a month ago was because the city staff said, you know, let's just make this thing blank for the entire city, even though fifty percent of the city doesn't quite do that. So the guy just said, nope. We're gonna have two sucks right here.
Thank you for. Thank you for setting up the computers so nicely. I assume that's. Like with the, the two meeting packets and then the Zoom split screens. Thank you.
You can do the other two. I'll, I'll request them. You don't have to worry about. Unless I get into trouble.
Welcome everyone. I call this meeting to order at six fifty nine.
Council clerk.
Here.
Councilor Benoma.
Here.
Councilor Greider.
Here.
Councilor Bustizo is not present. Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Per Miller.
Here.
Mayor Ayers Flon. Here. Mayor, you have a forum. Council Presley, you have a corner.
I remember addition for corrections to the agenda. I have. Under public presentation, I will play to. Add. No other.
Sorry. Um, I don't know that this is an addition or correction, but can we at some point check in on the December twentieth meeting before we leave today? That's at the bottom of the agenda is listed as a meeting that we're, we're holding, but I know there's been talk about not holding that one. Okay. Great.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask mayor, is, is, is your thing gonna be on the, the property?
Are you talking about the addition to the agenda for the letter?
Yeah, that's gonna be through the letter. Okay.
Yeah. Great.
Uh, moving on to, I remember. Thank you, council member Byers. There are a few things that are planned for December. On the eighth is a tree lighting ceremony from five to eight P M. Here at town hall. On the ninth is the urban forestry committee's work party at nine A M. To eleven A M. In Cameron Springs Park. On the fifteenth is a holiday gift tree at city hall at four thirty. And on the sixteenth, lights on bikes for four P M. To seven P M. Uh, that will start at Talent Maker City, and you may have seen the bicycle in the roundabout advertising this particular event. Uh, ongoing notices, um, the water bill is going out with a twenty twenty four city calendar uh, in hard copy. So the people have a better idea as to when this body meets and what other activities are planned associated with the city. Uh, the city offices are planned to be closed on December twentieth for wrapping party from twelve to two P M. Those of you participated in the ornament, selecting ornaments from the tree and providing um, toys and gifts and clothing to deserving citizens. And then the city will be closed for Christmas on December twenty fifth, which is a Monday. And that's all I have. Please do. Yes, we, I just got that note today, and I think either Lucero or Hector can elaborate on that. But yes, I believe so. We.
I think Colleen was the one who.
Well, it's. But Colleen's not gonna be here, right?
Yeah, um, you can contact Leslie.
Yeah. That'd be great. Thank you.
I remember for speaker start on knowledge and that I do.
No, personally.
I remember I had one presentation, I have one collection agent in the house.
At this time, um, Madam President, uh, I'm gonna ask Tessa to introduce our guest.
Hi there. I'd like to introduce Brian Watkins from Collect Northwest, and he is currently our collection agency. And he's here to answer any questions you can have about the collection agency process. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about what we do and why we do it and how we do it. A little bit of background about our company. Uh, you may not know Collect Northwest. We recently rebranded. Uh, the corporation is still Southern Oregon Credit Servicing. It's been around since nineteen sixty five. Uh, through mergers and acquisitions, our footprint has expanded. So we have offices in Oregon and Washington. We're licensed in Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and California. We have about thirty employees. Uh, primarily what we do is, is bad debt recovery for three major segments or industries. The largest area that we work is in what we would call government uh, type of recovery. That could be municipalities, special districts, and also higher education. We work for counties. We work for courts. Uh, we also uh, do healthcare. That's our second largest segment. And then our third largest segment is in financial recovery. So credit unions, banks, uh, things like that. We do a lot of other things, but those are the three main things. Uh, when it comes to working for uh, public entities, we look at it more than just a job because we're also serving the public trust. We live and work in the areas that we work for, the people that we talk to on the phone and help pay their bills, help them work their things out. We see them at the grocery store. We see them at the Little League game. Uh, we see them at the basketball game. So treating people with respect, which is one of our core values, is very important to us. Our other core values are be a great neighbor, exceed expectations, and maximize our clients' R O I. So we work for you. So far, we haven't done anything for the city of talent yet. Uh, the R F P went out, a request for proposal. We submitted a bid and we were awarded that contract. We've met with Tessa to discuss logistics about how to go about that. And they're in the process of working through the accounts to see what would be something to assign to us for collections or not. It's also important for us that when we work for a city, uh, county or a court, we understand that we're working for the entire community. Um, the more we can collect, the more that we're there, the more we help keep taxes down, other fees or assessments down for everybody else that's working hard to pay their bills. So it's not just a matter of we go after those folks or whatever. The misconceptions about what we do in our industry are, are myriad and paramount. Uh, how we work and what we do is, is actually much more technical than you would think. We have to introduce artificial intelligence into our industry these days. So it's not something that you would think is, is you get on the phone and rape people. That is first of all against the law and second of all, we wouldn't do that. And it's not beneficial anyway. Uh, another thing that uh, I was asked to, to talk to you about is how do we handle people who are in a difficult situation financially? Well, that's almost everybody we work with. Uh, they're in a difficult financial situation. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking to them. So uh, in addition to understanding compliance and the laws, we have two federal regulators in addition to dozens of state laws that we have to comply with. Uh, we work with a compassion. We work with listening. We work with understanding where people are at. In our company, we don't uh, really dictate or demand what people have to do unless our client asks us to, which typically they don't. They're happy to get anything. Uh, the other thing is keeping complaints down is very important. It's critical. If we treat people disrespectfully or in a manner that would not be consistent with our client's method or policy, they'll come find you. Uh, it's not hard for them to walk on the city hall and demand to talk to the mayor or a counselor or the city manager. So treating people with respect, making sure that that uh, conversation is one that is uh, something you would want to have occur on your behalf is very important to us. Uh, creating, creating uh, complaints is, is not something we're in the business of wanting to do.
Excuse me just a minute. I'm gonna figure out how to turn this.
Do I have to do that all over again? I can. I mean, I do this all the time. Good. All right.
We're good.
And lastly, on the introduction is uh, in, in helping people or working with people in, in difficult situation. Uh, we work very closely with consumer credit counseling. Uh, over the years, we've actually had employees always on their board of directors. We believe in their mission. Uh, unlike uh, some of the more national, eight hundred number, get out of debt types of places, consumer credit council, comprehensive system uh, where people have to go in uh, and they get help. They actually can learn how to work with their budget. And, and maybe they don't get back into debt, unlike a place where you just call in or log in and they try and negotiate and settle your debt. Consumer credit counseling actually uh, is an education source and resource. So uh, it's a, it's a organization that we do appreciate. And if people are really struggling across the board, uh, we recommend that they go there. And we always allow one or two or three or more, depending on their circumstance, opportunities to work out a payment agreement with them if that's what's necessary. So uh, from our perspective, you know, it's, it's important that uh, recovery happens. It's important that the people who can pay uh, do pay. That's how the credit system works. Um, and uh, it helps keep costs down for the people who are struggling, but they are making the payments because that's the right thing to do. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss uh, any other details, I guess, that, that we work for you and uh, how things go.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could like walk us through a specific. So let's say I don't pay my bill. Um, maybe you could just walk me through, you know, the degrees of uh, that you, of actions that you might take.
Certainly. Uh, the first thing we're gonna try and do is communicate with you. That's, that's paramount. Uh, so you're gonna get a letter from us. The letter is, is uh, formatted according to what the, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau requires a consumer collection notice to be. Uh, hopefully you respond to that. Most people don't. If letters and notices worked, I wouldn't be standing here because you, everybody sends them and yet they get ignored. So we're gonna try and contact you with whatever phone number that was provided to us from our client. In today's world, that is getting more and more difficult because with cell phones, the way they are, uh, numbers are easily blocked. Don't answer them. We're getting more and more people who don't even set up their voicemail. So we can't even leave a message for them. What voicemail box is full because it's just ignored. So we're gonna leave some information. So one of the things that we choose to do is we're gonna put our name on our caller I D with a callback number. Now, that may seem trivial, but in our world, understanding that most people, and you know why? I mean, we're, we're, we're told, don't answer spam calls. You know, they're, they're all scammers and so on. So you get an unrecognized phone number. Most people don't even, don't even bother to answer it today. So we wanna make sure that we let them know that we're a legitimate business best we can. And so that's on our caller I D. We don't have any kind of spoofing or, or mislabel on that. If you call us, we're gonna, we're gonna tell you certain things. We have to tell you. We're gonna identify you first. We're gonna make sure that you are the person we're allowed to talk to. Uh, and once that's done, we're gonna tell you a couple of things that we have to tell you by law. And then we're gonna ask, we're gonna let you know that, you know, a, a utility bill with the city of talent has been uh, sent to our office for collection. Your balance is eighty five dollars. How are you gonna take care of that? From there, it's what, what is the answer that we get? If the answer is, well, I can't take care of that. We're gonna wanna know how come. So are, are you in a difficult situation? What's your financial structure? What's happening? Uh, and from there, it's just a matter of whether that person is ever going to be able to pay or not. And so we're gonna try and find that out. Uh, most people we talk to, we just come to a payment arrangement. It's not any more complicated than that. Most people want to pay their bill. They just need some time or they need somebody to, to sort of work with them to do that. The problem is, is so few people answer the phone or call us back from the notice now. So how do we get someone's attention at the next step? So they've ignored us. We're no longer, we can't get a hold of them. They won't return our call. The next thing we will do after ninety days, if they haven't paid the balance in full, is it would be credit reported. Uh, utility bills are allowed to be reported to consumer credit uh, reports. Uh, but if they pay it in full within that ninety days, it never does get sent. If the balance is over fifty dollars. So if it's under fifty dollars, it also won't get sent. So smaller balances aren't. So sometimes that triggers people to say, oh, I've got credit karma or one of those types of things. And so they, they get an alert. Something's been put on their credit. And now they call us. What's this doing on my credit? And we get to start over. Well, this is from utility bill, and we just need to know how you get care of it. Uh, and we go from there. As far as credit reporting goes, uh, once they pay it with us, we update their credit report as being paid in full, and we let them know that that's what we wanna do. It'll, it'll, you know, improve your report. And then the following month, we'll actually have it deleted. Uh, there's no reason to have a paid collection account on someone's report. It just haunts them and uh, just makes them mad later when they go to, to get it done. So it does come off once it's paid in full. Uh, if they don't respond to that, now the account is on their credit and they still aren't paying. And it's very rare that somebody in our office has just one accounting collection. People don't have one water bill. They don't have one medical bill. They have a bunch of them because they have an event that happens in their life. And so that event sort of triggers a bunch of different things that they can't get around to and pay. An, an illness or an injury or something like that. In the household, loss of income. So from there, now we're gonna decide, all right, um, is this an account that would be litigated? Is this an account that we could use uh, it, a tax intercept for? And so part of the R F P for the city of talent was looking for a company that does the Department of Revenue tax per cent. So a few years ago, the legislature changed the law to allow dozens and dozens of more entities to be able to utilize that as a collection tool. Uh, municipalities are one of those. And we've been doing uh, the tax intercept for many years for uh, higher ed. And we do it for many other entities now. So if we're able to acquire a social security number for that individual, we can then send it to Department of Revenue. If that's per person's working and they have a tax return, that can be intercepted and paid toward the debt. So that's one thing that can happen. Another thing that can happen is if they continue to ignore us and they have enough uh, debt with our company, which could be, you know, hundreds and hundreds of dollars. And we know they're working. We believe that they are in a position that they should be able to pay. Uh, we can authorize or get authorization for small claims action. And hopefully, once they're shared with papers, they'll contact us. If not, we can move to a wage attachment. So those are the, the very last resorts. We don't do uh, those on very many things. You know, we get lots and lots of accounts to work. We don't file lawsuits on very many of them, not a high percentage, but it's something that could happen. But we don't sue if we don't think we can collect. You know, the issue of uh, well, just sue everybody or whatever. That, that's not cost effective, one, and it's, and it's not a good way to do business. So um, you have to be able to find out this person has the assets, resources to pay you, and they're just choosing not to. Uh, you'd be surprised how many people tell us every week, just sue me and garnish me. Happens all the time. And the reason for that, we think, is that people understand, look, they know they're terrible with money. They know it. And if we can just take it before they get it, their bill gets paid. And we don't have to talk to them. They don't have to talk to us, and they're happy. They get it taken care of. So we don't like to do it that way, but we can. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, very well. Thank you. Um, do you also uh, work with the property, intercept the property taxes?
No, no, that's not something that can be done.
Okay, my understanding was that the, that's how the.
Yeah, sewer service, different, different mechanism, different tools, different rules. So where we're looking at strictly Department of Revenue, your, your income tax return uh, through the state revenue. Yeah, that's all we're, that's all we're accessed to.
Can I just have one more follow up? Um, so if, let's say I don't, let's say um, it gets reported on my credit, and this is just because I'm not really familiar with our system, credit system. Um, and then you do, eventually gets removed from my credit report. Does that affect my credit score nevertheless?
Good question. Uh, I don't represent the credit bureaus. So I'll, I'll posit that. Um, I do know how the scores are generally calculated, but they can vary greatly between the models that are used. So the models might be, and, and they've changed so much because medical credit reporting has been removed from, from credit reports except for accounts over five hundred dollars. So, so that's a big change. Lots of changes around that. And how they score those, how they build those models is really up to the industry that does that. In general, I would say yes, that your score goes down when you have something put on collection, you know, a, a charge off goes down, a late payment, you go down because those are nicks against you. Too much credit, it goes down. Not enough available credit, it goes down. Late payments are the worst, believe it or not. But then you can have a repossession. It goes down. Those things come off. Well, the inverse should be true, right? That your credit score should go back up. So when things are removed, we believe that your credit score should go up. Whether that happens or not, that's up to the bureaus and what model that is used to score you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Done. All right. Thank you.
Moving on to our twenty five week two presentation on very, very.
Sorry, we're gonna. On behalf of my staff, I'm gonna introduce John. Um, I'll say, John. John is um, involved in the Bear Creek River Mile nineteen point, you know, nineteen uh, it's talent floodplain project, John Spease. Uh, John and I met uh, was it last week, week before last with Hector and Robert? And we thought um, he's asked to come and talk to you a little bit about the, the project, which I think is kind of inspirational. And um, so we've given him about fifteen minutes of time, and he's gonna run through uh, the project in Bear Creek. And we have some time open for questions. And, and we've actually invited members from the forestry, urban forestry committee to come and sit in on this as well. And so thank you, John.
You bet. Yeah.
Yeah, just wanna interject real quick. Um, uh, just as uh, when, when John came and presented to us in the spring, I'm gonna declare a potential con, uh, conflict of interest simply because of uh, 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 the adjacency of professional skills of work. Um, but I've had no uh, financial um, relationship with this project, but have enjoyed being a thought partner and a liaison to the city around it. And just let's get that out of the way. Yep.
All right. Um, this is working? Yeah, I guess so. Um, so thanks for introduction, Tom and Jason for the clarification there. Uh, again, my name is John Spease. I'm with the Rogue River Watership Council. With me tonight is Beth Boos. She's been with the Watership Council for about four days this week. So she just moved across country from uh, New York last week. So she arrived in, in Southern Oregon last Friday. Um, so again, this is the Bear Creek River Mile nineteen project, uh, slide actor. And we call this uh, River Mile nineteen because it's nineteen miles up from the mouth with the Rogue River. It's a nice way for us to spatially reference these projects that we have going on. So I'll just go quickly over the Watership Council, uh, the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative, the project in general, and then a leave time for questions. Um, I've been here and talked to the council. I think twice previously or via Zoom, but not in person. So this is an update. It's been about six months or so since I think this happened. Um, so I'd like to be here every couple of months to give an update as we go through this. So go ahead, Hector. So who's the Rogue River Watership Council? We are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. We are a combination of four smaller watershed councils that merged in twenty fifteen. The reason why we merged together was just become more effective and efficient in putting projects on the ground. We recently also merged with the Valleys of the Rogue Watership Council, which is the Athens Creek area. Um, so we have now two thirds of the Rogue Basin under, in our service area about approaching two million acres. We work on community engagement projects, ecological restoration projects, water quality monitoring and uh, improvement projects. Certainly, we're not doing that across the whole basin at once. But when we do projects, we like to touch on each of those components. Let's go ahead, Hector. So that's our service area there. Uh, I guess you can't see the whole thing, but we, again, are about two thirds of the Rogue Basin, about two million acres. We work strategically. We work in the upper part of the Rogue Basin right now, focusing on Little Butte Creek, Elk Creek, Trail Creek, uh, Big Butte Creek. We focus on those areas because the uplift for coho salmon and endangered species is, there's a lot of potential there. We also focus on Bear Creek, and Bear Creek is unique because Bear Creek's the most urbanized uh, watershed in Southern Oregon, southwestern Oregon. Um, it's our population center, right? So a lot of us live here. I'm gonna make a mess here. Um, it's our population center, right? So a lot of us live here. I'm going to make a mess here. Um, and Bear Creek also presents a tremendous opportunity for water quality improvement and habitat improvement. Um, so that's one of our focus areas. Go ahead, Hector. So uh, the Watership Council is one of the leaders in the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative. And the BCRIs, I'll call it, uh, came together in twenty nineteen. From a bunch of partner organizations like myself, municipalities, uh, nonprofit organizations. Kind of in response to the Penninger Fire, if anyone remembers in Central Point in twenty nineteen, that was a about a hundred and twenty-five acre fire that was uh, thankfully uh, put out before it got too serious and too bad. Um, but we came together as organizations and said, we have a problem along Bear Creek, something bad is going to happen. And unfortunately, something bad did happen about a year and a half later. But what we recognized at the time was there was not only ecological potential for restoration, but there's a social component to that as well. So the BCRIs really trying to have a lands with recreation, ecological, social and public safety goals when we go into these projects, which is different than what we do in the upper part of the watershed. But because of the urban nature, we have to do that and we find that to be really important. So we had come up with ten priority projects, the BCRI in twenty nineteen. Um, and those priority projects considered all those goals that I just mentioned there. Um, many of those were in motion when Alameda Fire happened. Many of those projects that were in motion did burn. But we were able to pivot and remove and re uh, kind of start many of those projects. We talked to our funders. They agreed to allow us to do some uh, different restoration actions, et cetera, and we really focused on some post-fire restoration throughout Alameda Fire footprint. Uh, but out of this BCRI came additional priority project locations, which Jason Eugene Weir from the Freshwater Trust, uh, and others found, started talking about this area of Bear Creek River Mile nineteen, which is from Lynn Newbury Park to Ashland. It's a very unique opportunity in Bear Creek to do these floodplain type of projects. So go ahead, Hector. So again, um, between, I guess, Valley, South Valley View Road at Lynn Newbury and Wranglers Arena in Ashland. It's unique because there is not development right down on the creek. There's Bear Creek Greenway. There are orchards on the north or east side of the creek. But the other side of Bear Creek, all the development's up high. So from an ecological perspective, it allows us room to work on the floodplain. And we know that floodplain projects are important because in the face of climate change and drought, increasing water storage in a floodplain, uh, not only stores water subsurface, but also allows for late season releases uh, at base flows in Bear Creek. So we'll see some of that colder water come out in the system. At least we think that's what's going to happen. We sure certainly hope so. But this project specifically, um, is about ten acres almost. We've got different phases here. We have project development and funding. That development started in about twenty twenty-one-ish. So we started talking about this and we went after funding. And our primary funder for this project is the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, which historically was not interested in investing in Bear Creek. But after the Labor Day fires in twenty twenty, they had this uh, special funding opportunity where they allocated several tens of millions of dollars for these fire uh, locations. I think there was thirteen in the state. That Alameda Fire was one of them. So we applied for one of the grants. Uh, the freshwater trust applied for a grant, City of Talent applied for a grant. Jackson County Solid Water Conservation District applied for a grant for the open chain fire. So altogether, out of those four applications, it's about five and a half million dollars that was awarded from that funding pod to southwestern Oregon in response to those fires. We also secured additional funding from the drinking waters providers partnership. And for this Bear Creek project, we have about nine hundred thousand secured in grant funds. We think it's going to be about a million dollar project when we're done. So we have that project development and funding secured. We developed a community outreach plan. When we're doing work in the upper part of the watershed and we're working on one or two properties at a time, it's a little bit different story. There's not as many people right there looking at it. This is happening right in talent. So we have a dedicated community outreach plan, which I'll touch on. We've gone through permitting. We'll go through contracting next spring. We've got one more permit to secure. And then we go into implementation and construction in the summer of twenty twenty-four. So originally, we were going to go into construction this past summer. Because there was a little bit of funding of the state, uh, some issues at the state level about the continuation of the funding. We took our foot off the gas and we decided to go into twenty-four. So we're online to do that. We'll go into contracting probably early uh, early second quarter of twenty-four. And then we will have some monitoring ongoing for a couple of years. And just today, I met with the SOU capstone student group, a group of seniors. They're going to collect baseline information to this project location and set it up so another group can come back in two or three weeks and collect uh, data after the project gets completed. Um, so go ahead, Hector. I can't see that without my glasses. So this is just a schematic, uh, kind of what's going on out there. You it's hard to distinguish what's happening, but there are side channels. Uh, there are log structures that are shown there on the map a bit. Those will be put in. We're going to put in about two hundred pieces of wood at thirty-five, thirty to thirty-five locations throughout Bear Creek there. We're going to open up three to five different side channels, historic side channels, not new ones, ones that were there likely because of the ninety-seven floods. One of the benefits of Alameda Fire, probably one of the only benefits is that Blackberry component was burned out. We could get in there and actually see what was going on on the ground. And we saw all these channel scars out there when we were walking around and thought this is a great opportunity to reconnect that. Uh, the reason why I want to reconnect any stream to a side channel or the floodplain is it reduces this flooding flood power that comes down Bear Creek. Bear Creek is a fire hose, but if we give it opportunities to move laterally, it'll slow down that flood power. We obviously have a bridge just downstream of here. That's all good stuff to reduce that flood power. Go ahead, Hector. So our objectives are just that increased Bear Creek flood conveyance. So reduce threats to downstream popper property by storing those floodwaters on the floodplain there. We do that by capturing overbank flows, holding back some of that sediment that gets uh, eroded into Bear Creek. We want to restore the native riparian forest. The freshwater trust will take the lead on that component. Um, but we want to transition to plant communities that are more fire resilient and resistant. We want to improve terrestrial and aquatic wildlife. We know that that stretch again from Lynn Newbury to Wranglers Arena is some of the best habitat for endangered endangered fish species in Bear Creek. And obviously, there's a lot of bear down there. I mean, I've dug around down there. There's a lot of bear scat and other wildlife as well. And part of the BCRI, these project objectives, we want to have a public safety lens also on. So we, when we go in here and we replant or we um, work with the native vegetation, we try to open up line of sight for public safety officers who are going to be out there on the greenway. And then provide access to folks who live in the community. So I envision possibly some interpretive trails out there eventually. We've talked about having this be a first phase of many phases between here and Wranglers Arena. I can see three phases over the next probably five to six years. Uh, and again, providing opportunities for folks to engage with the riparian area in the creek. We know that the 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 most common place where folks put their fingers in the creek or get down there is in that riparian area. So if we can provide opportunities for them to do that, that'd be great. And we'll also have some interpretive signs that go in, explains why are we doing these type of projects? What's the benefit? I'm not going to fool you. The first year is going to be real, real messy. So just like any construction project, think about the housing development or something. It's real messy until it's not anymore. And that's what happens on these projects as well. And that's why we want to be transparent with the community, have a community engagement plan. Talk to people. I'd like to have people, a couple of community advocates on board that can be down there during construction next year. Uh, but invite the community to participate. Go ahead, Hector. So here's our outreach strategies and um, Beth is coming in, so she's going to take this on. Um, but we'll engage with the media surrounding landowners. We've started to do that. Mountain View Estates down there. I've met with owners and some of the tenants down there. They're very supportive of this project. Uh, we'll have a social media presence. Uh, we'll have tours out there. Uh, we'll present the project to stakeholders such as you and other folks in the community. We'll develop that informational signage. Like I said, we'll have, I think we have funding for three interpretive signs to go in. Um, we'd like to invite Talent Maker City to possibly design one of those and possibly even take care of some of the construction of those signs. And then we'll share engaging media surrounding the project. We do have a uh, uh, article for the sneak preview, sneak preview is that what it's called, um, being developed right now as well. So I imagine that'll go out sometime this spring along with other uh, press releases. Go ahead, Hector. So this shows just a, a map here, that orange line kind of wrapping around as a historic site channel. And so I want to get up there and point, but um, last year in those high flow events, I actually saw water back there. There is some hyperic exchange or exchange under the substrate or the the berm there that happens. Um, because it's very fluid through there, but we want to open up that channel there. We want it in that orange polygon over the top there. That's a berm from probably I five construction, maybe those rock cores or something that was just spoils that got dumped out there. That's impacting the ability for Bear Creek to move around. So we're going to skim the top of that, lower that elevation so high flows Bear Creek can connect to that side channel and soak that ground. And then we'll protect some high value vegetation that we're seeing out there. Jason's uh, Cisco U Bio surveys did a nice survey of the vegetation throughout the whole Alameda area. And we'll use some of that to help identify locations of high value vegetation and protect that. Yeah. One minute? Okay, well, we keep going then. Quick, 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 Hector. So we had a high flow event last year at one location. We lost six feet of bank last December here. We had another location where we lost twelve. Go ahead, Hector. Again, we've got our permits most insecure. We're going to construction next year, but something I want to bring up, this dovetails with the City of Talent, a web project as well. So go ahead, Hector. What I'm asking the council tonight, there is a area in red, that square red there at Lynn Newbury Park. I would ask the council to allow us to stage some equipment there during construction. I know that doesn't necessarily interfere with their O W E planting. I think it's in line with that grant. But that would give us an opportunity to put some construction equipment there, maybe some logs there and not damage any vegetation that you guys plant now. I'm asking you to wait in just that section of Lynn Newbury Park until after the construction next year. Uh, and then you'll be able to move forward. And I talked to Robert and Hector about that and Tom, and that seems okay, but we feel like we would need the council's approval to do that. So go ahead, Hector. We're done. Okay.
I I moved to give them another, another five minutes.
Um, I I second that.
Okay. Okay, I'll get through it here. So really, that's that's the gist of it. I wanted to get here and ask about that red polygon in the area at Lynn Newbury Park to be able to use during construction and hold off on planting with that O W E project that you guys have. But I think dovetails nicely with this as well. Comes from the same pot of money. So with that, I'm open for questions for anyone.
Well, this is more, I guess, for Tom. Is that, is that on our agenda? Uh, an item on our agenda to to talk about that? You're looking for an okay from council?
I will put it on the agenda. I think we, we still have some time, right, John?
Yeah.
To set it up. He wanted to introduce this tonight so that as we consider other plantings associated with your web grant that at least we're, we have, we're conscious of this and what they'd like to see happen. He mentioned putting a lot of wood in the stream in order to reinforce banks and and change the the channels. Um, and so that he needs, they need to find places where they can stage that are acceptable. And so I would simply bring that back to you for, yeah, a motion and later date was.
Or at a later date, you don't need it tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
A later date, unless you're in a position where you're comfortable making that.
Well, I mean, I, I think my question would be, does staff, this, if staff is cool with it and if it, and if um, Jason, I don't know if you can speak to O Web, that's um, if if everybody agrees that that works out, I I don't see why.
Well, we'd want to, I think we'd want to touch base with our urban forestry committee too.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah.
Get their feedback before we proceed, but um, would you, you're latest on, what do you think?
I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Okay.
So why don't we do that? We'll get their, their concurrents and then we can.
Sure, as long as there's time now.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Oh, uh, by the way, your microphone, your microphone isn't uh, very audible, just so you know, of the chairs, the chairs microphone's not very audible. Um, yeah, on this uh, on this question about um, equipment, honestly, it's, you know, the purview of the city manager to have um, uh, to manage the public lands. Um, and so I think, Tom, if you get um, if you get concurrence in terms of like not conflicting with planting or anything like that, and you decide that it's a, it's um, it it'll work. I I don't think it needs to come back to the council for a motion. I, unless I'm missing something.
Okay, well, if you give me that authorization, I think I still would like to talk to our urban forestry committee about that. Um, but we, in my conversations with John and and other city staff, we're, you know, we, we think it's it will work. In fact, there are other projects that this, as John mentioned, that the city uh, has been awarded grants for that all of this really does need to um, dovetail with uh, with each other. I I think uh, the program that we, the city of talent entered into with Jackson County and and the city of talent is another case in point where we got money from the the state fire marshal in order to do some um, preliminary work and that yep, that overlies, it overlaps as well, the program. And so if that works done, it might even create more pathways for John to get into his project area. So, yeah, if you're all right with me, um, authorizing him to proceed, I will um, meet with our urban forestry committee and and make sure that they're uh, understanding what the process is and what the needs are.
I just, I just would add, Tom, that I I, we don't need to authorize that. I think you already have that authority by way of our um, charter. So uh, I, in the absence of any particular policy about something like this, it is, it's actually your purviews uh, according to our charter. Um, so, but I do appreciate uh, your desire to um, check in with the committees. I think that's really great.
That's great. Thanks.
Hi, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, uh, you have a need for uh, irrigation source um, to help the vegetation that you're going to plant.
Yeah, I think, I think we will probably want irrigation on the uh, I guess, north or that's a reef there, but at the same time as a green area. I don't think we'll want to have irrigation along there for that replanting effort.
I I ask because um, we are set to install uh, an irrigation system there in uh, Lynn Newbury um, this winter, I believe, and it seems like um, uh, potentially a simple thing to tap into the north end of that system. Um, and if there's any design considerations that need to go into that to make that, you know, plug and play, uh, um, then let's talk about that. Um, and then the other is just, you know, talking about overlapping um, funding sources and grants and whatnot. Uh, the FEMA um, one point five million dollar FEMA grant comes to mind, um, which is you know, spanning uh, intended to um, uh, work on, um, you know, this is included within that um, work area uh, more broadly and uh, could be um, room for uh, collaboration or uh, you know, synthesis and emission uh, with your project and the goals of that um, that grant. So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think there's a lot of uh, money coming to Bear Creek right now, the footprint of fire. And I think it's our job at the BCRI and others to kind of help try to coordinate that and uh, make a map. Probably a lot of stuff so we can adequately share that and make sure we're not duplicating efforts and also complimenting other efforts. But I think you're absolutely right. I think there's what that funds, there's opportunity.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Counselor Clark.
Uh, just really appreciate uh, you coming and giving us this presentation, John. Um, uh, I think this is a super exciting project. Um, and uh, you know, this is an opportunity to, it's a tremendous education opportunity because it is so central. Um, and and so we're going to be able Um, and, and so we're going to be able to sort of, uh, Demonstrate, uh, the process of ecological restoration. Show how, how it's different when, when you de-channelize a creek where it's possible to, and that those waters can spread out and that All the ecological, uh, benefits that result when that happens. Uh, this is, uh, an exciting thing for talent to be involved in.
Yeah, I think tomorrow for the rest of the Bear Creek quarter as well.
Yeah.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much, John.
Moving on to item 5.3, Madam Mayor, can you hear me better?
Yes, that's great. Thank you so, so much.
And, um, I would like to invite you to present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, tonight I'm asking the council to consider a letter. Uh, I'll read it into the record after the presentation. Um, regarding support for, um, a, a great, um, a great opportunity, uh, For a business to, um, take the fabricated, uh, looking at the fabricated glass location. Anyway, the, um, Uh, they are seeking a state grant, uh, uh, And I'll let them explain more about that, uh, and the support letter would be, uh, to provide them support or Um, in their grant writing process, the, um, The grant is due on December 12th. If I remember correctly, and, um, so there is, um, there is some urgency to, to make that decision tonight. But again, I'll read the letter. So with that, I'd like to invite Adrian Broadhurst and Jack Mercer up to, uh, give us a 10 to 15 minute presentation on Uh, what they would be bringing into the community and, uh, and, uh, and their, um, prospects for the fabricated Get glass location.
Well, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and, and, and council members. I got some good news for you. You know, in previous, I've come to you for H plus. And ask for certain things and most of it down low, right? And thank you. I got good news that I'm not here for any of that tonight. All we're looking for at the end of the presentation is a motion to give us a letter of support For our grant. And, and what that is for is the old glass factory. We have a phenomenal Uh, purpose for that. It fits what we need exactly. Everything about that, that, that whole complex fits what we need exactly. Um, and, and what this is for is to build Non-combustible components and modulars prefab. And used all across the state. Um, tying it back into H plus, I mean, uh, they have put in a, a bid for the H plus talent two project. And we all know that that non-combustible material is, is wow. But the rapid production as well and the E factor, this is, this is just something that's Basically a, a, a miracle waiting to happen here in talent. It's going to bring jobs. It's going to use that factory that sits there vacant. And it's going to bring housing Of all levels, from affordable to, uh, you know, home buying. Right? Uh, workforce housing onsite. And I know, I know that Adrian, I'll introduce you, Adrian Broadhurst is the president and owner. But, um, they asked me to come on and, and, and help them run, uh, get this off the ground and get it going. And he said, Jack, you need to see this In here in town. And, and I know I've talked to Kristen, uh, once before anyway, she's, boy, we really need a use for that up there. And, and it couldn't be better. The timing is great. Uh, we just need a letter of support from the city saying, yeah, we like this. We want this to come into town. I mean, we need that letter short. Probably by the 12th of December, possibly. All right. So I'm going to get it over to Adrian. And when he's doing that, do you mind me bringing a panel around? Just letting you look and feel while he's talking? Is that okay?
Thank you, Jack. Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, I got the opportunity to present, um, this is about two years it works. Uh, required, happened, uh, and My wife and I had a big part to come down here and figure out how, how we build, uh, with something that can't turn out. Uh, we recognize that, uh, module construction is something that's necessary and needed. And then she had grants. These facilities are supposed to be regionally diverse. So one of the things that, uh, that I shared, uh, this, this particular facility, uh, is turnkey for us. Uh, we could go and turn the power on and start producing today. Uh, we're very different than the way most modular works. Uh, we actually fabricate analysts for months. Uh, so the, the panel that, uh, that is kind of shows a structural insulated panel. Uh, it's made for something called tech board. The tech board is a modified magnesium board. It is not. So when we make these structural insulated panels, uh, we have a shell, open shell, uh, it's not going to burn through. Uh, doesn't mean can't fail. It's rated as a one hour fire rate assembly, right? So it's a structural thing. Uh, but nothing can be used in that considering for the combustion of a fire. So Promised Land Peak, uh, the company chat down here, uh, in response to Uh, a 513 development company, uh, that's doing a large project in Network. Uh, called Rappaport Life. Uh, there's 140 units that are going. They're all going to be modular. Uh, we plan to, uh, re-fabricate all of those and we'd love to fabricate them in this facility. That, uh, that project is, uh, an example, uh, for all developers, uh, as a timeline. Uh, and that zero energy efficiency, uh, fire resistivity, uh, and the state timeframe that we can do, uh, not only with modular, but I analyze the elements ahead of time before we assemble the modules together. So we are a building materials company. Uh, we have an exclusive distributorship with Uh, what we call Z S T Technologies at Calvary, uh, that is a research and development company, uh, that Has the cap for that particular sheeting that, that Uh, we also have a couple of other distributorships for, uh, Uh, liquid applied roofing, uh, that's a class A fire rated roof. Uh, it's a, uh, it's a complete membrane. Uh, we use none of the roof assemblies. We, we have the ability to spray on coatings That, uh, the roofing coatings and wall coatings that replace the siding, uh, all have one hour fire rates and Fire and so you can't. So, uh, we just wanted to share with you a little bit about the excitement that, that we will be, uh, we will be Actually manufacturing, uh, a lot of panelized components. So that first stage kind of gives you a little rundown. Um, that's why I want to make sure you add it in your hands. Uh, it's a lot of information to digest, but Uh, we will have products to support local builders. We will have panelized components to be able to boost builders, uh, production efficiency. Uh, and then we will also have a pre-fabricated structures, uh, to help developers like turn one page plus. Uh, the other way, uh, projects market very quickly. So, uh, we've been a full price offer. Uh, we're, we're waiting for the seller to give us their, their final yes and will they have to have considerations? Uh, but it is our number one, uh, designated, um, Uh, opportunity where we, we would like to be, um, we have a couple backup plans. But to be able to come in and boost, uh, the commerce and the economy. Uh, be able to support the goals where, where these communities have affected so greatly. So, uh, thank you. I, I could go other, other information. Uh, there, there's a couple of things in here that are just kind of fun to look at. Page two just shows, uh, what a, what a standard built site often looks like when you use Materials and that waste, cutting and piles of things. Uh, when you, when you use panelized cycle stuff, Uh, and your waste goes down, your efficiency goes, goes up. Uh, I have a couple of handouts in there to just show our materials. I won't go over them. Uh, just wanted to make sure you have them. Uh, toward the back, there's a, there's an actual layout of, uh, Breath of Life Network. Uh, it's fun just to take a look at to see. There's going to be 72 apartments that go in three stories. Uh, we've got these little four plexes, uh, that are actually home ownership opportunities. Uh, so we're, we're going to have not only affordable rental housing, Uh, but we're able to support them to do affordable homeownership housing. Uh, and we're going to bring, uh, Fifty-six, uh, attached units and then 12 detached units, um, Uh, that are going to range between probably 175 and 275,000 dollars for home re-plant. Uh, and I put a couple of renderings in the back just to give you guys an idea of what that looks like. Uh, and just looking for your support, sending a letter and like to give you the opportunity for you guys to ask any questions again.
Counselor brighter.
About how many employees would work at this site?
Great question. So when we first opened about 20 on site, Uh, by the end of the first, uh, whole year, about 50 employees on sites in the facility. Uh, that does not include, uh, the employment and job opportunities for all of the subcontractors that we will also, uh, employ and involve. Uh, the facility itself will look more like, uh, manufacturing, uh, like components, putting together a shell, shell go outside. Uh, our plan and pop scale is not to try in-house all of those trade skills in the beginning. So we will have, uh, electricians and plumbers and it'll kind of look like a subdivision tiny homes outside my yard. Uh, which will be fun. And that will be in addition to the
Counselor Clark.
What, what, uh, grants are you, uh, applying for?
Yeah, the main grant, uh, is N H D. Uh, it's the Modular Housing Development Fund and The primary goal of that, um, that grant is to identify Minimum of a core entities to establish or bolster the modular production facility in the state of Oregon. Uh, so specifically for our needs, right? We want to come in and establish a module, modular production facility, right? Uh, not just residential units, uh, in, in the sense of like manufacturing replacement. That's all that part of what we can do. Uh, we've made some proposals either to some of the homeowners around here. Uh, we have the ability to do the two story modularing. So we, we raise some unique aspects to the manufactured home replacement, but we also can do the multi-family, uh, and some of the commercial model. But that's specifically what the grant is championed for was to establish More capacity for modular production, but and we want to make sure that Southern Oregon has a great presence.
Any other question? Um, if, if I could get a little help with the next steps, we have The mayor requesting us to potentially make a motion about A draft letter, correct, Mayor?
That's right. And what I'll do is go ahead and read the letter into the record for, um, those who are listening in. And, um, and, and then I'll submit the letter to the record, um, as well. Um, and, uh, and then I'll, uh, I'll look for consent of the council. So, uh, the letter is dated accordingly, uh, from Mayor Darby Ayers Flood. Uh, in regards to Promised Land DBA Rogue Modulators. I would like to express my support for Rogue Modulators in their proposal To advance their acquisition for property to provide an Emergency and non-emergency prefabricated housing in Southern Oregon That will also have a concentrated, uh, concentration to fill the need Uh, for swift building of affordable housing. I have met with Adrian Broadhurst, President of Promised Land and Jack Mercer, Lead Consultant for Promised Land and H plus Affordable Senior Housing Prefabricated Projects. I am abundantly confident that their proposed prefabrication plant Is not just especially needed in Southern Oregon, but it is needed in all of Oregon. Housing is at a never Seen before crisis level, a non-combustible prefabricated housing production facility that is promising Nearly immediate, uh, nearly immediate 100 emergency housing units if called upon. With such a high efficiency at such an unprecedented low cost is as close to a miracle as humanly pro-possible. I am expressing my full support and request that the reader of this letter will support This crucial need as well. I just want to add, um, I did ask, um, Uh, Jack to present me with a, uh, an outlined letter. I would ask, uh, to make two changes. I support The language in this letter, just two, uh, small changes. I would ask that the letter, I would, uh, send the letter to express my support on behalf of the council, which is why I'm asking for council consent. And then I would change the lan-, uh, the language around. Uh, I would change the language From, uh, as such, an unprecedented low cost is as close to a miracle as humanly possible. Um, I would change that to, uh, language more along the lines of, um, as, um, Uh, uh, would be an exceptional use. I would strike miracle as humanly possible and Would be an exceptional use. So those are the two changes I'm asking, uh, and, and That I'm proposing To this letter, and then I'm just asking for consent by a motion Uh, to send this letter on behalf of council and mayor.
And Mayor, would you like that on, um, mayoral letter, letterhead or a council letterhead and, and the council? Um, You know, endorsing it with your signature.
Well, we don't have council letterhead, but that's certainly a good suggestion. Um, I would probably just put it on mayoral Um, letterhead on behalf of the council and, uh, sign it. They'll just make it easier to get it ready for the Um, for the quick turnaround.
Okay.
But thank you for the suggestion, Tom. So with this, I, I would ask for a motion.
I would entertain the question. Counselor Clark.
I move to approve the letter of support as amended.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the Letter as amended and a second. Um, all those in favor? Uh, motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
All right. Um, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, We've got a lot of, a lot of exciting news in this, um, council meeting. Moving on to item number six, public hearing. And the Uh, item 6.1 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone 2023 dash 001. I am going to now read the necessary statement to open a public hearing. And then I am open to guidance after that. Uh, all right, so, um, Yes.
Question, I know we were talking to staff about this before. Um, I'm just wondering, is it really necessary to open a public hearing if our intention is just to Um, ask planning to, uh, Finish up and, and make a recommendation?
So, uh, if I, if I might interject here, the request The request from the applicant is that it, the item be, uh, the public hearing be opened Uh, can continue to a date time specific in January of the 17th. That was The applicant's request in this particular case of the matter of opening the public hearing certain, uh, Simply allows the, um, Public, if they were anticipating some sort of decision tonight to come and then be referred to a later date. We happen to know that, uh, well, It's, I've, I've come to the conclusion that this is, is most likely a quasi judicial, uh, application and therefore Uh, The applicant has the right to request that this, this item be continued. Um, and allow him the, uh, time to deliberate, decide if he wants to withdraw Or take other action relative to, uh, this proposal. So I know that we've talked in the past about the possibility of simply remanding This to the council, but I think in this particular instance, the applicant has asked Um, that the council open the public hearing, continue to date time specific and then allow you at that time to Make a decision relative to refining commission.
Counselor Penama.
Um, so when this was in planning, was this, uh, quasi judicial or was this legislative?
Well, I believe it was, it was advertised as a legislative decision. However, after further Analysis, it's become clear to me that it's quasi judicial in nature. It involves one property and property owner. And even though they're proposing to amend The comprehensive plan and the zoning for this property, it's isolated to this property. Legislative decisions are or run based, uh, when you adopt a, a code revision or Uh, amend the urban growth boundary, for instance, it has far reaching, wider reaching Uh, implications and it's a decision that council can initiate Uh, and ha- and applies citywide potentially or to a particular Larger scale.
So if I could just follow up as far as process, if this was seen as a quasi So if I could just follow up as far as process, if this was seen as a quasi judicial from the get go, it would start in planning as a quasi judicial and then it would be appealable to the council, but it would be a decision made by planning. Whereas legislative, they recommend to council, is that right?
In either case, you know, the council, the planning commission can make decisions relative to subdivisions typically and unconditional uses, not, you know, if it if it expands to include plan amendments, zone changes, variances, those things are your purview, and so they're making recommendations to you.
Okay, okay.
In this particular case, whether you know, regardless of how it may have been portrayed, they both in both cases, the planning commission is making a recommendation to the city council, and you have the ultimate authority to decide one way or the other. We're simply, you know, because it's quasi judicial in nature, because it, the applicant has has did not receive a favorable recommendation, one or a negative recommendation either way. He's simply asked to continue this, to let him give him some himself some time to think about it and allow you to deliberate further as to what you think the best course of action might be.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Madam Mayor.
I have some concerns about processing the way that's being suggested, and I want to say why. This was an application made as a type four legislative application and and it was processed as a type four legislative matter. And without, you know, it it seems to me that it makes more sense to remand it back to the planning commission if the applicant wishes to change the application and take it before the planning commission to be heard as a quasi judicial matter. Then whether or not it's legislative or quasi judicial could be sorted out at the planning level. But to open a hearing when there's not any clarity about even the type of application that we have before us, I think could be problematic. And, you know, there has been discussion that this could end up if, you know, if the applicant so choose could end up going to Luba, and I think a convoluted application type would only would not serve the city well at all. So I think no matter, I mean, it's just my opinion that no matter whether it is going to be continued as a legislative matter or the applicant wishes to choose the type of applica- a different type of application that they want to apply for, and then have that considered as to whether or not it is a applic- it's actually that kind of application. It it probably needs to start over, and I just don't think, you know, when you when you if there's a confusion about the type of matter that this is, then I certainly wouldn't know, wouldn't want to see us open up a public hearing under those circumstances. Those are my concerns.
Dave.
My my conclusion after looking at this is that whether or not it's a quasi judicial matter does not depend on our determination or on the application that was filed. That's a determination that could end up being made by Luba. Who will, and it's a difficulty, sometimes it's difficult to determine what is quasi judicial and what is what is legislating. But looking at this, I have to agree with Tom. It looks like it's likely to be deemed to be quasi judicial. And therefore, I would argue that the safest thing to do is to treat it as that right now and give us time to work with the the applicant who has yet to decide exactly what he even wants to do with his application.
And and my concern, Madam Mayor, with the remand is I don't really have any material evidence to provide to you or the council to make a determination to remand. You you have provisions in your code. I haven't brought those forth to the city council tonight. I'm merely operating off of the request of the applicant who would like to postpone the city's action on this until they have some time to think about it. Normally, in a quasi judicial proposal like this, we have a limited amount of time to act on the on on the proposal. In this case, the applicant's given us additional time beyond that hundred and twenty days, simply by asking for this extension. So that's my logic here is I don't, I, you know, had I been able to bring some material evidence to you or the council tonight, that would be grounds for remand, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
Well, had we discussed the remand, as I would have argued that the reason for remand was was because there was no understanding of the process at the at the planning commission level. So it wasn't until the following day that the chair, I I think it was the following day, it may have been a day or two after, but the the chair proposed that the remedy was that it would even come to the council under these circumstances. So I feel like this is with respect and by mistake mishandled from the very beginning, and I I still remain deeply concerned that the suggestion is to open a public hearing without all of these details being sorted out and and clarity being provided for us. You know, opening the public hearing triggers process and and I don't think we're we have a full understanding or we're, you know, that there's a full understanding of what what that means in the long run in terms of whether or not. Yeah, this this is a matter for the for the whether or not this is a matter to go back to the planning commission or not. It just seems like opening up the plan, opening up a public hearing is premature. And and it's still arguable, I think, whether or not the hundred and twenty day clock is ticking, if this is indeed as applied, a legislative type four application. Our code doesn't doesn't start that clock under that type of application. So I this this feels very convoluted and adding additional complication. I I stand by those comments.
Counselor Penama.
So is it possible for us to postpone this item to, you know, like the next meeting or wherever and give you give you all the chance? I mean, I I assume you can still talk to the applicant and kind of figure stuff out. And and then, you know, and then whether that ends up restarting coming back to us with grounds to remand or or starting afresh as a type three at planning, whatever. Because I think no matter what, we're not planning on really doing anything tonight because we don't have, you know, you haven't had the chance to prepare anyway. So could could we just, is that a legal move right now to to just post, just to push this to the next meeting to try to figure out?
Let me check.
Okay.
Did we notice, did we notice this? Think that the fact that it wound up on.
This project was noticed for a public hearing tonight, and the applicant has specifically asked that this item be continued until the seventh of January. So nothing's going to happen tonight.
Right.
They want to continue to January seventeenth. They're not in town.
Yeah, and I and I hear that.
Doesn't make any sense to continue it indefinitely. They've already asked. We're not holding a public hearing tonight. We're opening, closing, and continuing until the seventh.
But do we need to hold that close?
It doesn't have any bearing on whether it's legislative or quasi judicial. They've already requested.
But doesn't a public hearing kind of indicate that we're going to either, not tonight, but eventually here and make a decision and have findings and all of that, when our intention is for this to start afresh at planning and not with this body, it feels a little misleading to open a public hearing, even continuing.
Project may completely change, so.
Yeah, and I was, is there anything that would prevent it?
Change as far as the process.
Right. But I'm just wondering if you really even need us to open a public hearing.
Well, because it was noticed, yes.
Because it was noticed and.
Notice, don't compose, continue.
Okay, so you're saying is because it was noticed, we must open it to be in compliance. So I guess that was.
Attorney has something more he wants to say. That's what I've always known. When you notice, when you public notice a meeting, you have to open and close it and continue to a date certain, or you have to notice.
I am recognizing Mayor Darby. You're muted, Mayor.
Dave, I I that's not my understanding at all that it has to be opened. I I do want to ask, is another option for the council to make a motion to direct staff to bring back facts for remand?
That would be an option. I I think you need to do something with respect to this agenda item. And I believe that Counselor Penama proposal does make sense. I'm not familiar with any requirement that if you provide notice that a public, there's going to be a public hearing, that you have to have one, even if you've decided you really want to postpone it to a future date. So I believe we can simply not not open and continue, but postpone.
Yeah, postpone the agenda item to a date certain.
Yes.
Which which achieves the same thing. We're not actually doing anything. We just haven't started process, which I think was the mayor's concern of starting the process of a a public hearing.
Sure.
So I mean, to Kristen's point, I it's like you you can't have a public hearing if you haven't noticed it. But if you've noticed it, you're not necessarily obligated to have it. I think that's that's what you're saying, right, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Ayers Flood.
But if the council wished to direct staff to bring back fa- I'm sorry, I don't remember what what Tom suggested needed to be prepared for remand. We would be able to do it on this agenda item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So tracking this conversation. We are not obligated to open a public hearing if it has been noticed. There is in discussion via Counselor Penama postponing this agenda item to a date certain. And we would still be in compliance with all necessary codes and timelines as triggered or not triggered.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you would like to entertain a motion to that effect.
I would entertain a motion.
Before I make the motion, I I think we're going to probably skip the December twentieth meeting, so this would do you want me to put the date of this to be like in the first?
Well, the applicant asked initially that it be continued until the seventeenth. So if you'd like to postpone action on this until January seventeenth, that might be, that'd be consistent with.
Okay, I know. I just know I can't leave it uncertain because that like makes it impossible to ever do.
Right.
Okay. All right. So January seventeenth. Okay. I moved postpone this item to the meeting on January seventeen. So.
Second.
I have a motion to postpone agenda item six point one until the regular council meeting on January second seventeen. Thank you. And a second. Do we need to take roll call for this agenda item for any reason? It always been safe.
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any opposed?
Oh, any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number seven point one, department reports.
Yes, Madam President, there is a department report. There's one department report. I see that Robert Slaton is participating virtually. I will, I will ask him to unmute at some point just to clarify a couple of things. He pointed out that we did have one employee left our public works department to be replaced by a new maintenance specialist, one to whom we offered, made a job offer today. I don't know if he's even listening. The other, the other things that he has identified as work projects. There he is now. Robert, would you like to unmute and and expound upon your public works report? Perhaps tell us a little bit more about Cameron Springs.
Yeah, good evening, counsel. So Cameron Springs restroom was scheduled to be delivered on November twenty eighth. But unfortunately, on the date of delivery, the crane had a malfunction and broke down. So they had to get the crane repaired in order to unload it from the trailer. And now it is rescheduled for tomorrow morning. We will start about eight AM. The crane should arrive by nine. We should be done by around noon tomorrow with it set in place. Everything else on there is is current and accurate. Tom already spoke about our our new employee that we made the job offer to today. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And that concludes our.
Counselor Penama. Thank you. So, Robert, I was I was thrilled to see that you got a certificate for traffic safety. And I'm just wondering what that, what you what you learned in that, did it have to do, because, you know, we have the Traffic Safety Commission ready to stand up and it'd be nice to have kind of like an orientation. I was wondering, does that, is that like, is that like a specific to like construction project thing? Or is it more about like traffic safety for res- that residents would be interested in improving the city? I'm just wondering what the the subject matter was.
So the certificate is actually it's for traffic safety supervisor, traffic coordinator, su- traffic coordinator, safety supervisor is actually the title of it. And it is geared towards specifically construction projects. So as companies bring in plans to do certain projects in town, a lot of the times that they need traffic control set up to do a lane closure or a road closure. This gave me the ability to look over and make changes and proposals to their traffic plan to make sure it's the safest for not just the motorists, but also for the people that have to walk and bike and to make sure that they're they're doing everything that they're required to do by state law.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's sounds like wonderful continuing education, and thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions on our department report? Right. Thank you so much, and congratulations on your your certificate, Robert. And moving on to the consent calendar, would any counselor like to request to have any item on the consent agenda removed and considered separately? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Counselor Clark.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item nine point one in, I'm item nine, unfinished business and item nine point one, the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine eight zero dash oh amending title eighteen, chapter eighteen point one nine five, non-conforming uses lots and structures.
So this is the second reading of one twenty-three nine eight zero during the eighteen one ninety-five non-conformous law and structures. Staff is recommending the following, I find amendment that I will read as part of the second reading for this amendment. And basically, it's number two, we are striking out this section. And we like, I assume I agree that a legally established structure containing a non-conforming use which was destroyed or damaged by fire, flood, earthquake, wind, explosion, or other unanticipated destructive event to an extent exceeding seventy-five percent of their face value of the structure. to an extent exceeding seventy-five percent of their face value of the structure as determined by the records of the county assessor. For the year preceding destruction shall meet the criteria of subsection F three A E below of the future structure or use of the property shall conform to the regulations for the zone in which it was located. Uh, staff is, is determined, we would like to strike this out for clarity. It's, um, writ somewhat redundant. So that's the, that will be the second reading and clarifying.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just do a mea culpa? I, uh, in drafting, uh, this amendment, um, I thought it would make it clearer if we added that paragraph, followed by the two paragraphs that really state what's supposed to happen. But as we read it again after the, uh, first reading that the council had, I concluded that it actually confused matters, that the two provisions that follow this state clearly enough what is supposed to happen in that summary paragraph that precedes them is not needed and can confuse people. So that's the reason for making this proposed change, otherwise change. Otherwise, uh, this is exactly the same, uh, as what the council passed, uh, on first reading.
The entire, in that ordinance has written, well, that will be clarified, assuming this is a, who will, is in your staff report.
All right. Any questions? I would entertain a motion.
Counselor Penama? Since it's written so nicely, I, uh, move to adopt and hold the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine three eight dash O for the talent municipal code title eighteen, chapter eighteen dot one nine five, non-conforming uses lots and structures as approved on first reading on November fifteenth with the proposed clarifying amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt and hold the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine three eight dash O for the talent municipal code title eighteen, chapter eighteen point one nine five, non-conforming uses lots and structures as approved on first reading on November fifteenth with the proposed clarifying amendment. We have to do roll call for this, correct? Yes. All right. Roll call.
Um, Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Paramiller? Motion carries.
All right. Item nine point two.
This one is simply a second reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-three nine eight two dash zero, second reading of the annexation in zone or one, uh, parcel eight two one.
And any, any questions, comments? All right. I would entertain a motion.
Counselor Paramiller?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine eight two dash O for annexation and zone of eight twenty-one South Pacific Highway to be included in the city limits.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance twenty-three dash nine eight two dash O for annexation and zone of eight two one South Pacific Highway to be included in the city limits. Roll call.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penamara?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Paramiller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Kristen.
All right. Item number ten, new business.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Jeff Ballard is here to discuss the status of a water meter infrastructure. Jeff, you're more than welcome to come up and give us a status report. Jeff is the city's engineer with RH two, Art. Is that right?
Right.
Yeah.
Baron Council, some of you have seen me before over the years. Um, I was just thinking about this when I was sitting back here, sec- second time I've had the conversation and the other one was almost, well, it was over twenty years ago. Um, so currently, a little bit of history. So the city has, you know, I'm usually here talking about exciting things, but now we're talking about the smallest thing that lives in our water system, which is the, the water meters, which is what figures out how much water each house uses within the system. Um, currently there's little, almost twenty-two hundred active meters in the city of Talent. Some of them are bigger, some of them are smaller, uh, depending on the use, uh, for each of those meters. The challenge, the industry's kind of been dealing with over the years. Um, actually, the last time I was here, uh, the debate was going on whether we were going to continue to walk around and read meters, the public work staff, every single meter, every single month, uh, a person going through that meter. The decision was made back in two thousand three, two thousand four to go away from that and kind of keep up with the changing technology and infrastructure that water purveyors use in the state of Oregon and across the country for that matter. At that time, Talent was transitioning over to what was called a touch read meter. And so we had graduated from no longer actually writing it down in the book, but we had actually been walking around electronically, picking up those reads. Um, meters were starting to go bad, which meters generally twenty to twenty-five year lifespan on physically operational meters where they have propellers and parts of cycle. Those things wear out. They start out roughly between a hundred and a hundred and two percent accuracy. So they start a little bit high, but then as they get used over time, they get down in that ninety-four, ninety-five percent where now we're losing accounting for the water that's actually going through those meters. Um, that happened back in two thousand three, two thousand four. The city at that time made a decision that they were going to, like I said, move ahead in technology and go to radio read meter. Which is idea behind that and the benefit is now at this point, with radio read meters, the crew doesn't have to actually go to every meter every month. They can pull up on the block, hit a button, get the reads to come through the truck, record those and go back. Um, till about twenty twenty, um, those things were working really well for the city. Um, but what started to occur twenty twenty, going in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and now obviously in twenty-three, um, the radios that are part of those meters are battery operated and those batteries have a life expectancy and a lifespan to those. And those batteries are now beginning to wear out, um, in conversations with Robert. And I guess just to make sure everybody knows my involvement, I've been around a long time in the very capacity. Um, I've been helping out a little bit um, with the lack of people in public works. I was brought back in to help out from the director's standpoint as needed to try to help Robert grow, help the city managers that were, that have been here to keep things moving in public. I'm here to talk to you about. Right. Uh, Robert has a ton of information about this as well. The, like I said, the challenge is now these things are starting to die at a fairly rapid pace. Uh, Tessa and Robert and Jordan and Tom got ahold of me and said, hey, we really need to evaluate what we should do moving forward. Because we're in a situation where we have twenty-year-old electronic equipment. Uh, the industry continues to move forward. The water system hasn't really moved forward, which is not abnormal for most cities. Most cities all go through this. All water purveyors go through the same, kind of the same steps throughout the process. But the technology that we currently have is no longer being supported as well from the previous supplier. Uh, every time the electronics go down, it takes longer to get things returned. We're starting to get to the point where we used to be able to borrow things from other cities, but talent's getting further, further behind. So we're running out of cities to borrow equipment from. When we have our equipment getting fixed, right? And we need these things every month to stay up on, on reading water meters, these water bills for the customers. Um, so like I said, they came to me and said, hey, we, we can either start installing forty to fifty meters a month on the old technology, keep things limping along, or what do you think we should do? So when I started looking at things and looking at price and what everything else and how everything usually moves forward, it's was my recommendation, an alternative, which is to replace the meters and the technology twenty to twenty-five years. Uh, and so that's why I'm here to discuss with you guys. Uh, the recommendation that I had discussed was that we should go out for an RFP to find a supplier that has the right technology, is up to date with technology and makes life and everything easier for both billing staff, public work staff and the county staff to deal with this at city hall. So, um, that's the very short version, but this is the introduction to the issue essentially. So that you guys are aware of the directions that we're looking at and opening up the opportunity for you guys to ask questions. Uh, so we can make sure you have adequate information when we bring a proposal back to what we think is the, the best recommendation.
Thank you so much, Counselor Penamara.
Yeah, so, um, you've probably worked with other cities, talked to other cities. What are other cities doing? Is it, um, like, pretty much? Yeah, there's like an obvious path forward, um, that most cities do, or is there a lot of choice or how, how difficult is this a decision to make?
Uh, there is a variety of choices that can be made and, you know, the way that we, what other cities have done, you know, we set up the RFP to lay out the options that we want. Technology, what information we can gather. You know, the, the opportunity to this, which is forgotten a lot of times, is that information is extremely valuable in the water world for the customer and for the purveyor. Um, right now, talent is a place where we don't really have that instantaneous knowledge that would be beneficial to have. Um, you know, every time that we have somebody shut a water meter off or somebody move out, you know, somebody has to go to that location, read the meter, come back, give that information to city hall. Hey, here's what the read is, figure out what the total was. New technologies, that's not necessary. You know, we no longer have to send people to that spot. There's technology available. We can push the button and one person in city hall can read all the meters at once, uh, on the same day, at the same time, every single month, um, which standardizes the information and gives you accurate information. Literally a push of a button. Um, when they do want water meter reads for somebody who's moving out, they can push the button and see what it is. Um, they also, the technology notify customers when they have a leak. You know, hey, you're seeing continual water usage through your meter on a daily basis and it never stops, right? Automatically sends a notification to customer. It's high likelihood that you have a meter, you know, you have a leak in your water system. Gives them an opportunity to respond quicker than not accrue additional water costs because it might take Robert and his group a month or two to catch that. And now that information's in the hands of the customer. So there's a lot of advantages that come with the new technology, but there is change that comes with it as well. But most purveyors are moving in that direction regionally and nationally for that one. Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Robert. Um, and, um, I, uh, thank you, Jeff, for this great presentation. I, I, it's, we've been prepared for, um, this discussion or have been, uh, being prepared along, uh, the way for this discussion. I'm glad to see that, um, we're starting to move forward with it. Um, I, I'm curious, like, what, uh, we're going to an RFP to, uh, hire a consultant. What will the consultant provide for the city?
There, there's a lot of options, uh, Mayor. The direction that we would be looking at right now would be a complete service from near installation. Radio technology installation and coordination with billing department to make sure everything comes on board and works correctly. Um, it's not practical at this point with the crew size and the work and everything else that has to go on. The, the city can do the installation itself. And so the intent would be to contract the entire switch over to a, uh, outside company that would come in and do that.
Is that a compa- is that a capacity issue or just an expertise issue?
I heard the capacity part. What was the second part of that question?
I, I said, is it more of a capacity issue or a expertise issue?
Expert. It, it's a little bit of both. Um, the, I mean, the crew's done a great job and, and, um, you know, hi- hindsight, when this happened twenty years ago, I remember we, we couldn't afford to pay for everything at once. And so we did about half the city one year and budgeted fifty or seventy-five thousand next year to do it, and it happened over about a four-year time period. The challenge with that in that four years, which is about how long it took the city crew last time to make this transition, is in that four years, the technology can change. Then the options can change. And so we've dealt with a, um, and like I said, Rob and previous people involved, they've done a great job dealing with the inconsistencies between the meters and the radios. But it's not a great direction to move forward along that same path. And so I've based on seeing that happen, not only in talent, but in other cities, it's a much cleaner situation. And honestly, more cost effective to have somebody come in and do everything at one time and get it done and, and move on to bigger, better things.
Yeah, that makes sense. My last, my, my last question is, um, I, you know, it's, you brought up, um, how it was phased in two thousand four and I, I thought it was phased in more than like half and half. I thought it was phased in several, uh, phases. It brings me to the question, are we, is this something we're going to be able to phase this time? Or is it something that it's like, is it a wholesale change? What, what, what do you think we're looking at? And is that a fair question to ask at this time?
No, it, it's absolutely a fair question, a very good question. Um, right, yeah. It was about four years last time we did this, the transition period. Started out and then had to spend money on something else and then came back a little stronger the third year and then kind of wrapped things up fourth and fifth year. Um, I would not recommend phasing it. Um, the main challenge, or the main reason why I say that is if we did half of it and waited a year, uh, the crew, the finance department, the billing folks would still be dealing with the same problem for another additional year because we can't predict what radios are going to die and what meters are going to quit working. Uh, the crew essentially finds that out when they go out to read and then they come back and the billing, you know, the billing staff says, hey, these fifty didn't register. Then they have to go out and hand read those fifty. And they've been limping through that process for several months now, waiting, uh, because we don't want to invest bad money towards a bad product, right? So or good money towards a bad product. And so they've been dealing with a little more than is probably necessary over the last few months. Um, you know, basically trying to make sure that we have the right, the right action moving forward. And so based on that and everything else involved, I would not recommend phasing it. I would recommend a, a full set of.
Thank you.
And, and Jeff, you're not advocating a consultant to study the programs, is consultant actually do the work, right? Or, or an RFP for somebody to actually do the work, not figure out what needs to be done and then do the work.
Yeah, one hundred percent. And so, um, you know, we've worked with some of the other local cities to look at options and ways been done. And what we're recommending is to put out an RFP for the contractor to supply the meters, supply the swap over of the technology. Um, and then obviously that RFP would come to you guys for review, so you can see what's in there. But it, it gives some options for technologies, lays out the life expectancy. One, they have to provide information, um, you know, basically so we can evaluate what the cost is per meter over the lifespan of the meter, uh, because some of them last longer or expensive. Some of them don't last as long, but they're cheaper. And so we try to find a baseline to make that work. And then it also has conditions associated with the radio technology that we want to use from a communication standpoint as far as the flexibility that billing needs and the, the public work staff needs to accomplish their job.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, so, uh, whenever it was twenty years ago, we went in with this new system with the radios. Now there's, uh, parts, I used, I think you said something about the batteries that can't be replaced at this point, or? What?
The, so the rate, some of the radios can be replaced. Uh, the challenge is, and you know, we deal with this continually from a technologically driven world where the current technology that's being utilized and is not being supported. And so we can change the battery to the radio, but to find somebody that'll continue to work on the handheld that reads that radio that gives us the information is the next biggest challenge that's coming to, uh, because the industry has moved on from that twenty-year technology, the new technology, um, similar to cell phones and everything else that you deal with. Uh, and that, that's the honest real challenge of it. The, the other part of that is, is making a decision on whether or not we want to continue with a mechanically driven meter or go to a different type of meter. And, and the industry, and that's part of what's in the RFP, is battery life of the next stage of equipment and whether or not those are interchangeable. And if they're interchangeable, what's the life expectancy of those interchangeable batteries? It's turned into a very technical endeavor when, I mean. It's turned into a very technical endeavor when, I mean, a hundred years, people walk around, book Reddit. It worked fine, but everybody's transitioned into this, this new, new way to do things, and there are challenges to come with it, such as batteries.
Yeah, I mean, I think you spoke, spoke to my concerns is kind of um, putting ourselves in the same position again of terms of uh, dependency upon technologies that may not be supported in the future or things that break that, um, you know, uh, the part would be cheap if anyone made it, but no one makes it. And so you're left in that position. I, I don't I don't relish that uh, position of dependency in my own life economically or that, that vulnerability of being dependent upon, um, I mean, tied, so tied into something, you know, um, deeply invested in then, uh, you know, not being able to make what should be simple repairs. Um, um, but yeah, so that's, I guess that's my concern about, you know, about the process and, and it sounds like you're thinking about that too, um, in terms of the, um, the development of the RFP and understanding what kind of technologies we would be considering, but.
And I, I, I am on your side. I, I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
On what you're saying. Uh, and that's the challenge. That's the challenge we have right now is there is a reliance on the proprietary, proprietary
Sorry, Terry.
proprietary technology and they, and they purposely keep themselves apart, right? So that we can't do what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, and that's a reality of the industry that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think as the industry continues to improve, those things will improve. But we haven't quite got to that point where everything's interchangeable and everything works together. Um, the hope would be and the plan would be in the requirements, the RFP, that, you know, this is a, we would set a life expectancy of this program. You know, there are companies that are coming out and saying, okay, because of exactly what you're saying, you don't have to buy it. You pay us monthly for our system. And as long as you pay us, we'll keep everything running. But you never own it. And when you look at the lifecycle cost of that, they went, right? So, uh, those things are included and are, those options are available, but currently it's just, uh, we kind of have to just take the best of what's available and move forward.
Madam Mayor, I've seen your hand up. Did you have more questions?
Yeah, I, um, uh, actually, a lot of what just was said, um, answered some of my questions, but um, the thing that came up earlier was when, uh, Jeff said that, um, they're going to provide us with options, uh, to look at for technology. And, um, so that triggered two questions for me. One is, will they be look, will we, will we be determining what, you know, kind of, what the approach of this project is going to be? And like, for example, um, we just want to do this all at once. And, uh, so we want to, uh, we want an RFP that is going to do a wholesale change, uh, but we want options and technology. Like, are we deciding that? And then that's going to get built into the RFP, or will they also be providing us with uh, options for affordable kind of approaches, different ways that you can approach this, uh, to make it more affordable? I, I know this is going to be expensive. I, the, the last one was really expensive. Uh, I would imagine, um, yeah, so um, that's, that's one question. And the other question I have is about budget. So I'll, I'll wait and ask that in a minute.
Yeah, and so we can, you know, I mean, I could work with Tom and Robert, you know, we can, we drafted an RFP that we can change by gravity as far as I want to do that, but we can put together a mix of options, technologies, and come back and have a, you know, a presentation or conversation with the council and mayor. Um, and let you guys go through what those options are. Because we, it's pretty, there's not a limit on how we need to lay this out. You know, we set what the standard is and then people come to us with their, um, available options and meet those standards. So, uh, it doesn't limit the technology. We just limit what the deliverable is from the technologies that are available.
Gotcha. And then, um, do we, have we got any part of this process budgeted for this year? Or are, is this whole thing preparing for budget year, uh, the next budget cycle? I guess the third question is, if not, are we looking at, uh, some sort of budget amendment?
And here comes Tessa to elaborate.
Um, actually, what we're doing is currently working on the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets started today.
Closer.
And, uh, that's maybe included in budget. Um, one of the things that we're looking at, of the financing of this project, is it's going to be a really hefty price act. Is to reallocate some of the art fundings that we intended for other projects to be able to do this. Only part of the people. Um, maybe we can also ask, uh, the manufacturers of the water meters if they offer loans to save. Currently, we can't do out any funding for this because you're already having to, with our own. Yeah.
They're closer.
Counselor Penamara, so I, I think Jeff, you said, and I, I think Tessie, you're probably going to agree that whatever the solution that we come up with is going to make things easier for billing, easier for reading so that people don't even have to go out unless there's a problem. And it sounds like some sort of smart meter that's going to, um, report in to, you know, an interface with the accounting system, QuickBooks, whatever. And you'd be able to, um, you know, kind of do your thing. That's kind of like the vision. That it would be a real, uh, a lot easier in terms of, um, staff capacity when it's all rolled out.
I just, Tess has answered well, but I, I think right now what we're dealing with is getting it back to normalcy. It is the key, uh, more so than relieving need. It's what they're doing right now is far beyond what's normally expected or necessary, which cuts into other things to be able to do. But this will add in some additional capacity that we currently don't have.
Right, because, uh, just to follow up on that, I heard you say that e- even in good times, they have to drive out and read meters and stuff like that, which seems really silly today, you know, with the technology, as you said, that's available today, that, you know, you, you know, nobody should have to go anywhere. It should just all report like wifi and all that.
Two things, one, meters fail fast, that's, that's, that's thirty meters. And just going on. And number two, um, the thing that we need to take a look at is that there's different levels of technology to be looking at. Talent doesn't need Cadillac, talent can solve as far as a level of technology. We want something that's going to last us in the future. And we also need to be thinking about averting this crisis again, why was it crisis at the time, but averting this situation again, where we, we actually do a meter replacement program over time. So we keep putting in and replacing meters and reading to earlier.
Counselor Penamara. And, and just one more kind of follow up. Um, you know, when, when people move in, they have to pay, put a little chunk of change for like the backflow. You know, um, device and stuff like that. Is there a precedent for having, um, consumers, um, pay for this in some way or buy this and like maybe even they get to, you know, use it, rent it with their phones and know what's going on? Has that been, I don't know if that's a thing?
As far as having the consumer pay for it.
Yeah.
Is that a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's a, if that's a model that, that consumer can adopt it.
Well, definitely for new construction after the, the new technology, then for the new meters have been installed in the city. Then, you know, currently the customer paid for the meters, right?
Right.
And so they would be paying for the meter technology as well. The, the reality is, it's not a huge cost gain in, for the meter installation of current stuff versus the old stuff.
Okay.
Actually, and so it's not, not a huge, it's not like we're stepping up to a, a super expensive meter.
Oh, no.
They still have kept the price point down pretty low. It's changed what's in there and what's.
And do you know offhand what that price point is, what a meter costs, just for?
Robert.
So currently, right now, with our, we buy SR twos, we go through census. And currently, right now, we pay a hundred and seventy-five dollars per meter. That's, that's to purchase the meter. Um, there is companies out there, um, that have upped their technology, but the meters are actually running between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty. So it's actually a cost savings with, with different manufacturers. And that's part of what the, this RFP is going to figure out for us is, um, that balance of, you know, the cheaper meter versus the more expensive on the lifespan um, and everything that goes along with it. Right now, we're, the, the company that we're with is more on the upper end um, of the price point per meter.
Thank you.
These, um, these, uh, meters, are they guaranteed to work? And then are they warranted? So they say it's going to run, run twenty years and it breaks down in fifteen? And you just say, hey, I want five years of credit on this thing?
So currently with census meters, they've got a fifteen-year warranty. It's full replacement at ten, and at ten years, it's got a depreci- depreciated value for the last five years. And so as those meters, if we have meters that fail inside that fifteen years, we send it back to census and then they give us meter credit basically for us to purchase more meters. Um, and that's how we're, and it's the same thing with the radios.
Okay, thanks.
That's their methodology to keep you on board, is you don't get money, you get meter credits for their meters.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah, you continue to put them in and you continue to replace with their.
Yeah.
I just had a follow-up question. Uh, I waited, um, I had a follow-up question for, uh, Tessa because I didn't, I wasn't able to hear everything that she said, but I think what I heard her say was um, that one of the options we were going to be looking at would be a loan, uh, and I, I'm, and I appreciate, I appreciate that very much. Um, if we're looking at replacing all of the meters all at once, um, I mean, I just remember sticker shock, uh, when, when I, in the last process, but, um, um, so, uh, would that be, would be, would it be like, um, so that we could get to work on this right away? Or is that the purpose of the loan? Or would we be able to not take a loan and um, and, and really make this part of the next budget cycle? Like, what is kind of the thought process around that? Are we looking at trying to get this done right away?
Um, the thought process is to start it with the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, this, uh, fiscal year. Um, it's my understanding that the art of money needs to be spent before the end of twenty twenty-five, but I'm going to double check that, that amount. Because as the loan that I was talking about was to ask the actual meter companies if they offer financing. We do not have the ability to go out and get bond financing because we're pretty much already at the top limit for amount of bond financing for a city of our size. That is my understanding.
Is that, that's from the water tank, isn't it? From the new water tank?
Yes, that's one, that's one of the bonds. We have, we have, um, three different, um, loans out there. One's a consolidation of four different, um, bonds, and then two other. One is for the tap and the time, the other is for the new most work.
Yeah. Water's expensive, uh, but boy, I'm glad, uh, you know, given, given twenty-year-old technology and the, and the, you know, just like I said, we've been prepped for this for a while. I'm, that, I'm, this has been a very thoughtful presentation all the way around. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, I don't believe we need a motion for anything.
No, this was informational and we sure appreciate you coming forward and spending time with us tonight, Jeff.
Thank you for this very informative presentation. All right, moving on to, uh, item eleven, other business and future agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, item ten point two. I'm not going to skip you, Donna. Moving on to item ten point two, consideration of talent public arts committee recommendation on public art project.
And I don't know if Colette wanted to introduce Donna? Or do you want to introduce yourself?
Well, Donna does know everyone here. This is Donna Ruiz, who is the chair of the talent public arts committee. She's also served on the parks commission, as past chair, is still on the parks commission and is very closely involved in our city.
Welcome, Donna.
But not everybody knows me. Is that good? He gave me the microphone. I got really scared and it's like nine o'clock at night. It's my bedroom.
Me too.
Um, these two motions are very interrelated. Um, the first one that we have in front of you, very interesting, the second one. The first one is to ask the state council to look at the feasibility of being able to put a mural of some kind that would represent the city of town on the waterways. So the feasibility is, oh, yeah, sure. I'm a talent public arts, painting paint, going to the mural. And I'm not asking the RFP for what that art should look like, but can we do it? Is it feasible? Um, would we have the permission, what kind of scaffolding would we need? Can we even get scaffolding up there or is it too steep? You know, is it a possibility to even do it? And that's what I mean by feasibility. I'm not asking the city to look at what artwork right now, but the feasibility of a mural is that when we look up at that hill, we can see something beautiful that represents something. And not necessarily something that, um, of course, if, if we decided on the art project and ask much later, it would have to flow into the hills and flow into our city and. So that's what I'm asking on motion one, which relates to motion two. Our motion two. Um, T-PAC's issue. You can see I have.
Are you doing this one?
Counselor Perry Miller.
Uh, thank you, Donna. I also just wanted to note for council that this recommendation from T-PAC came with a unanimous uh, due pass recommendation, that this feasibility study be, um, initiated by T-PAC. And then that council asks staff to start looking into this process. Uh, Madam Mayor. You are muted, Mayor.
This is, this is exciting to see this recommendation come before us. I would hope that what we would be looking for would be to, um, ask staff to hire a, a consultant that would be able to, um, assess the surface, assess the height, assess the ground with staff, uh, in, in collaboration with staff and just give us, um, uh, really just a, um, yeah, a, a a recommendation of whether or not a project like this could, could be achieved. Just so that we can get it done.
Um, Madam Mayor, or maybe Tom, do we need to keep, also consider some sort of budgetary amendment to allot funding? For a consideration like this, a feasibility study?
Well, um, I didn't quite, I didn't know exactly what was coming, Donna. But I think if, if she's asking, uh, for an analysis, I think the first thing we want to try to do is get our arms around what, uh, you know, uh, I gotta, I need to probably get together with Robert and take a look at the, the, um, reservoir. And I mean, there's some things that we could probably determine, um, internally before we ask somebody to, um, uh, evaluate the, uh, the topography or the, the liability or, or, or that sort of thing. So I'd be happy to work with Donna and, and, uh, and then go out to the reservoir with her and a contingent and, and, uh, have you elaborate a little further on, on the actual, you know, how much of the mural or how much of the reservoir you want to paint it and, and that sort of thing. So I, I'm, I volunteer to go with Donna and whomever with some other city staff to kind of take a look at this and get our, get our arms around it.
And I think that's what I was initially thinking. I've worked with Robert a lot, and he parks him up. And Robert, I can't see you, but, um, he's awesome that, I mean, I'm to places that we want to do things and talking about, is it feasible? You know, is there other water restrictions and I think that's what's in the mind.
Okay. Yeah.
Our one mind.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to add, I think ultimately we're going to need a consultant anyway. I mean, I, you know, a, a project of that size, um, is I, I think, I think the staff's, um, recog- I mean, the staff's assessment is also necessary. Um, uh, in terms of topography and all the things that Tom just mentioned and, and probably more that Robert knows about as well. Um, but whether or not an art project of that size, um, could actually be, you know, achievable and what it would take and kind of what costs we Achievable and what it would take and kind of what costs we we should be looking at. Um, I think ultimately we're gonna need a consultant anyway. So I if if not a recommenda- if not a uh, motion to. See, hire a consultant. I would ask that the staff also, while they're doing this, this initial. Assessment, um, also look. Um, for a consultant that could provide us with. Um. You know, not, not just an assessment, but you know, potential. Um. I mean, we're, we're not artists, so uh, potential unforeseen. Um, expect, you know, things to expect. So uh, it just to kind of poke around and see if there's somebody that uh, that could actually provide us with a a deeper analysis would be helpful. So. We don't. Uh, have to make that decision later if um. If it's determined that we can continue to pursue this. Or that we should.
Well, now, were you thinking about doing the painting yourself, Donna, or how, or your group was going to be doing the painting?
Um, probably not. Um, but. Um, which goes to my, my the second theme that I'm here to talk to you about at nine o'clock. Um, next week. And um, it is that. We want to do.
Just, just a minute. Are are you jumping into your next consideration?
A lot of the murals that we want to do in the city um, would be. So to say, this is our theme. And this would be way down the road for the. Um, waterways. Because we don't even know if we could do it. But it would probably be a call to artists in trying to have a theme. And then making sure that artists submit along with budgets and all of that kind of thing. And then, of course, um, T-PAC would help to make a determination of maybe, I'm just sort of a top line. And then if we bring it through, and of course, we have to be voted by. Whoever needs to develop that particular project and. But no, it wouldn't necessarily be a T-PAC person was.
Yeah. Well, so I was just thinking, you know. Cut out the middle man and the consultant. There are groups that go around painting murals and they, they. Typically assess the areas that they're going to paint. We had somebody in Central Point that was contemplating painting on the Grange Co-op. Green elevator and so they. There, there are people who are both qualified as artists as well as um. Uh, you know. The, the same people who understand the, the mechanics of actually painting and working in. In certain circumstances. So that's all I was thinking about is the, the possibility of. Set up hiring a consultant to. Tell us whether we can do it, hire, you know, people that would potentially be interested in doing it and let them. Tell us. What they'd have to have in order to make it work.
Wouldn't we need some kind of feasibility study first to make sure that we could even do it?
Like paint on that as well.
Robert always tells us when we can do things. Um, if we want to build certain things in the park or whatever, it seems like we always use city staff members can help with that.
Yeah, well, preliminarily and then um, I mean, unless the mayor thinks we really need to. Hire a consultant to um. To bridge that gap.
I see the mayor with her hand up, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, I agree with what Tom's saying preliminarily. Um, definitely. Um, all the things that you described, even reaching out to the group that you're aware of, but I, but you know, this is um. This is an initial, in initial stages of planning, it is a multi-organization um, collaboration that. Um, is being discussed with the Talent Historical Society, Talent Maker City, um, the Talent Public Arts Committee. Um, and the initial, um. The initial plans are that this is a, you know, probably an eighteen months to two-year project. Um, and that it is a, it's literally, it would be a public arts project subject. Um, subject to the. You know, the public arts process. So um, it isn't, I don't think just um. Meant to be, you know, the grants uh, would be written, et cetera. Um, so I don't think it's meant to. Um. Be kind of an ad hoc mural um, type of project as much as it would be. You know, um, a. Uh, a. Probably a public arts process with a piece of art chosen through the public process. And uh, and then event and probably applied by a professional artist. Um, so I do think ultimately we're gonna end up at a consultant, but I think the group that you described just a couple of minutes ago might know somebody. Who would be able to um, assess. Kind of the scale of this project for us. Um, I, I, I do. Think there's value in just letting you guys do your preliminary, preliminary assessment and. Reaching out to that group that you're talking about and bringing back that information before. Um, we really need to. Start seeking out a, a consultant to help us with this, but I think ultimately that's what we're trying to go because this, we really. This is meant to be. A large-scale public art project.
Do we require a motion to direct staff in any way at this point?
You can just tell us. You just asked me to do it. Put it on my list.
Are we all in agreement? We'd like Tom to go out and take a look at the water tower for our very first feasibility. Glance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, um, you know, to the, to the point of, you know. Robert and and Tom, you know, checking things out with Donna, but also involving uh, potentially involving um. Artists who, who do this kind of evaluation. I mean, y'all take a look, say, hey, I wonder about this, what about this? And then engage somebody who um, actually has. You know, uh, experience in doing that kind of work like you were saying. And have them, you know, address your questions and all of that. So it might not be like a real formal RFP. It might be just to come up and hang out with us for an hour and we'll pay you to give us a, an idea of how feasible this is. And then that will involve into a more formal type of thing, right?
And I do see Madam Mayor's hand up. Did you have further input?
I, I actually accidentally left it up, but um, I would add that, um, I mean, I think the outcome that we are looking for. As a multi-organizational project is just. Um, a, you know, professional assessment. After the staff assessment. Um, but a, a, a professional assessment that this is how a, a, a project like a public arts project like of this scale. Will need to be approached and, and helping with uh, planning out. Um, you know, how um. Materials, how to hire somebody, all of that kind of stuff. So I mean, I think ultimately that's where it's. Where it's going. If, if approved.
All right, so we're all in agreement? Lot of. Lot of agreement, okay?
I'm excited about this project and I support the notion of uh. Learning what we can with uh, staff time and uh, informal or inexpensive uh, conversations with. Um, with relevant professionals, um. On a small scale and then, and then see where we go from there, but I'm. Excited about it. Excited to see the Public Arts Committee bringing this to us.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I independently. Had this idea about the time the water. I'm sure I wasn't the only one. Lots of people looked up there and went, wow, it'd be cool if it was covered with some beautiful art, but. Um, yeah, uh, thank you for. Taking it this far.
Dan, shout out, shout out to Public Works on this. I don't know, I can't remember if it was Brett or Robert who mentioned this when we took the tour. But I think somebody said this would be a great place for a piece of art.
I remember.
You remember, Robert, was it you? Yeah, I thought so. So this is a, this is a little bit of a hijacked idea, but uh, putting it through the talent public arts process is. Uh, is the, is a great objective way to come up with a great piece of community, community art.
I, I do have a little. Input to share. I'm super excited about this. I've, I know and work with an artist who is a muralist and has. Done this type of work and I will say, um, this is. Exciting. He is not the person that assesses if scaffolding can be put up and who oversees having it put up. It's a completely different company. And um, also the, the going rate per square foot is. Um, it adds up really quickly. And so it's gonna be a, a big um. Uh, develop, development project as well, but that's okay. I, I think it's totally worthy of that effort. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to add, we have grant writers on our team, so uh, there's a couple of. That is gonna get to uh, hard at work at this.
All right, um, thanks so much for bringing up that exciting um, topic. Can you, would you like to transition to item ten point three? Talking about the five to ten year master plan of the Talent Public Arts Committee.
I would. So I kind of should have had that first because it would have flowed better for my mind, but um, we weren't cut through. The, we're calling it a master plan for talent public arts committee. We started this. Over a year ago in a room when we first get together in person after we call the public staff. And we put all of our ideas up on the wall. And said, you know, what do you think you'd like to do as an art project? What do you think? And we got all these different ideas from our home. From our phone committee and then also talking to people around the community. And we took all of these ideas and put it into a great big document. And then we kind of whittled that down and it took us over a year to get to a place where we could say. Can we share it with the city council? Can you see what they think? At first, it was kind of more of a goal document, like these are our goals. And why would we do that? It's because we wanted to have a vision. We wanted to know that if somebody came up to us and said, we could go to town to. And do this. We could say, that's not our vision. Our vision is to do these things and move time to the distraction. And we thought if we could document that and put it into a plan and. Have the council review it, obviously give us feedback and maybe even potentially. Have it look like a master plan like the Parks and Rec master plan. So I was on Park, uh, Parks and Rec. I was the chair. It took me a really long time to adapt that master plan. I didn't understand how it drove that council or that committee. Um, but I saw how it did everything. Because you had documentation and you knew what you were doing and every very real suspect on presentation. And you'd say, what would we like to bring up to the top this year? And that helps with budgeting and it helps you for your long-term plan. So. I kind of put. All of our ideas into what. I saw worked for a master plan in Parks and Rec. But I put it into what I would call goals or master plan for um, talent public arts. Um, so what I would like to do is be able to share that with you via um, Colette. And have you give us feedback on it. I, I fully expect feedback. It's kind of a long document. The way that we organized it was with goals and then with projects. And then with steps with partners with potential um. Uh, costs. So we tried to organize it similar to Parks and Rec, but. Uh, whilst we're in our own committee, we did it according to our projects that we like to see happen. And some of those our projects are murals in the city. So. Let's get some murals on the historical society. They asked us to do that. What would it take? Let's get the murals on different buildings, a camelot building. What would that take? Could we put flags on the flag poles in town? And have it represent all of our businesses and everything that we are in town. There's about, what would you say, twenty? Ideas in there, twenty-five? Um, that you'll see documented and it really is in. In favor of seeing talent as an artistic destination where we can have all the music that we're having many days. And that will be able to have people walk around and see all the arts that could be additional out of the city and hopefully we can. Keep bringing that art to the city and put some, did I do anything? Yeah, and so what I'm doing here is asking you for your feedback. Let's just see it. It is kind of a long document. Um, and then, you know, eventually to see what you would want to adopt it. Similar to the master plan for Parks and Rec. And then whether uh, the art community could use that as our um, driving documents to be reviewed every year. And then to review every five months to see if it still makes sense, if we need to add something, remove something.
Counselor Penar.
I'm just gonna uh, suggest that we look at time. Um, we're supposed to end at nine thirty. We have an executive session. I just want to put a little reminder before we go into executive session, we should vote to extend the meeting. That's all.
Should we just vote to extend it now?
We could. Um, I'm just suggesting we move further on in the agenda. There's no action for this. Donna, right? But I, it's a beautiful idea.
There is no action for this, right? We decided.
The action is that Donna's letting us know that she's gonna send us this and then she would like counsel and staff feedback.
Got it. Nice.
Yeah, send it.
That's really exciting, Donna. Thank you for that massive. Massive. That's really exciting, Donna. Thank you for that massive amount of guidance and effort on such a big project. Yeah.
Yep.
Good night. All right, moving on to item number eleven, other business and future agenda items. Do we?
And this might be a good opportunity to talk about whether you want to have a meeting on the twentieth before we go into executive session.
I am good with skipping.
I will not be available.
I can meet if we need to meet, but I would be fine if we didn't meet.
Same. Okay, do you want a motion? Move to council, council the um, regular meeting for the twentieth. Second.
We have a motion and a second to cancel the regular city council meeting on December twentieth. All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion carries.
With that in mind, is there anything that you would like? Or you're expecting then on the uh, for the first meeting in January? We know what we're gonna have on the seventeenth. One other thing. There anything that, certain expectations?
Is the Tura, I'm so sorry to bring this up again, is the Tura meeting before? The second meeting of the month or the first meeting?
Normally Tuesday, um. The second Tuesday of the month, and I'll try and get that back on track. Uh, after the first of the year.
But we did vote on two separate occasions to move it to before our second regular council meeting.
Okay, and then we just did it here because we probably wouldn't have the second December. So in January, it would be the seventeenth.
Yes, if we were following what we voted.
Okay, okay, that's what you go around. Yeah, thank you for correcting.
Sorry. We're tracking the drifting Tura meeting.
Okay.
All right, um, any other discussion for item eleven? Moving on, um. To item number twelve, written communications. We. Have none. Um, and before we. Uh, uh, move on to item number thirteen, I would entertain a motion to extend the council meeting.
I need to extend the council meeting till ten P M or if that is necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry, one moment. I missed a hand.
Second. I'm not sure at what point it's appropriate to, but I just.
You have to go?
No, no.
Um. No, Nicole brought up that I missed a hand. I. I see a hand raised by a participant.
An attendee.
An attendee, I'm sorry. Um, I don't believe that this is a point in time where we uh. Recognize, um. Speakers without a, a speaker form.
Yeah.
And we have none in front of us. Do we have any in front of us?
Lucera?
She's locked.
No, no, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So since we have no. Did we receive any last minute speaker request forms?
Hey, Madam Chair, a point of order. I think you should probably dispose of your motion and then. Discuss. You've got a motion and a second on the table.
Yes, sorry, thank you. Um, so we have a motion and a second to extend the uh. Council meeting until. As needed, I'm, I'm sorry, refresh my memory.
I said ten o'clock and it's needed because it's my understanding we can't go past ten o'clock regardless. Am I remembering that correctly, Mayor?
Yeah, you're, that's correct. It's a charter provision, so you can't even relax the rules on that.
Okay, great. So until 10 o'clock or as, as needed up until 10 o'clock?
Yeah, if that'll give us enough time.
The.
I am going to double check the charter. I'm pretty sure it's in the charter, but if it's just in the council rules, that changes it.
It's in the charter.
It's in the charter? Oh, gee.
All right.
Now, the dilemma that we may have, Darby, if we go to executive session, we're going to have to mute the mixing board, which may mean that you can't hear what's going on unless you want to call in on a phone and, and.
Darby, call me on my phone and I'll put you on speakerphone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you.
So do you need to read something before we?
I.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have... So sorry, I need a... A prompt for exiting executive session. I need a prompt for exiting executive session.
Just say that we're...
Ready for a motion. We are exiting executive session and at 9:58 no decisions have been made. I am willing to... I am... Sorry, it's almost 10. I would accept a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. I'm going to approve the redlined version of the employment agreement for Gary Milliman.
Second, we have a motion for...
Could I say with the addition of exercising the severance pay provision?
With the addition of exercising the severance pay addition.
Second. Section. We have a motion and a second to direct staff to approve the redlined version of the employment agreement with Gary Milliman, exercising the severance section. Do we need to do roll call for this?
I think you want to.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Panamera?
Yes.
Counselor Greider?
Yes.
Counselor Per Miller?
Yes. Great. Then we have moved on to item 15, adjournment. I adjourned this meeting at 10:00 PM.
Wow, good.
That was pretty exciting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.